I'll call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Thursday, October 1, 2020. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Salz.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Jiza.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley.
Thank you very much. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
(inaudible) Thank you very much.
Thank you for those watching at home. We don't have any visitors here with us tonight except Mr. Up Hughes, and I assume he does not want to have public comment. So we're going to just move straight to the reports of village officers. I do not have a report this evening. Manager Francis?
I do have a report this evening. If I could ask Mr. Bailey to step up to the podium, if you would be so kind.
There's hardly room for me up here.
So for those of you at home that may not be aware, Director Bailey will be retiring at the end of this month, and his last day here with the village in office will be October 16th. So I wanted to acknowledge all his service with the village and acknowledge him, just generally speaking. So if the board will indulge me for a moment or two. Ed started with the village in June 2010 as the interim director of Public Works. He took on the position permanently in October of 2010. Ed is the longest-serving Public Works director over the past 25 years, which to me is quite the accomplishment. Ed was key in transforming the department into what it is today. He has created sound policies and procedures within the department. He was instrumental in obtaining a number of grants for the village for infrastructure and green initiatives. It was mentioned to me that my predecessor, Peter Scolera, hired Mr. Bailey to bring stability to the department, and that is exactly what Ed has done over the past 10 years. Ed brings a calming presence to every situation. On a personal note, I recall being interviewed for the position of Finance Director, and Ed being part of the interview panel. His questions were challenging and his comments insightful. Ed has always brought a unique dynamic to our team, and he is one of the few people that can use the word jeepers in a conversation. Ed, I speak for the department heads, all of village staff, and myself when I say thank you for all that you have done for the village over the past 10 years. The collective achievements of the village over the past 10 years could not have been accomplished without you. You are a key part of our management team, and while I am sad to see you retire, I am also excited for you and this new chapter in your life. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those kind words, and one of the things that I've been thinking is, where did those 10 years go? It's really been a really fulfilling experience to serve the Village of Riverside, and the accomplishments that the village manager mentioned, as we all know, really come about because of teamwork. And certainly, one of the hallmarks of this organization and community is working together, whether it's the village staff, residents, volunteers, various volunteer groups. And that's really what you end up really missing when you leave an organization is the people. And certainly, I'll bring or leave here with a lot of good memories of especially the village staff. But I leave knowing that the Department of Public Works will be in good hands, and the village administration is very up to the task of leading the village further into the future. I know you have significant challenges. You've had them before. It's just a matter of everybody pulling together and working through them, which I know you will. So I wish everyone a bright future, the village individually, and I thank you for the opportunity again, for the opportunity to serve here. And like I say, I've had about 30-some-year career in local government. My 10 years here has been among the most fulfilling of that career. So certainly, I appreciate my time here, and, you know, time to move on. Somebody else can pick up the ball and run with it. I did my nighttime, and I think I'll see what's here. Well, it's sealed up, but it's a very nice Galaxy watch. I don't want to have to break into it and drop it on the floor or something in front of everybody.
So Ed, if I can just add a couple of things in addition to what Francis said. I mean, we've worked together for a long time now, and I've always been very impressed by your innovation. You have been a driving force in our move toward green infrastructure and green policy practices in this village, and you were never have, I never had to encourage you for that. You always were there first. And if there's one thing that I've been told over and over in the last several years by residents is how beautiful the village is, and how lovely our green spaces and the streets and everything is just in such perfect working order. And you were the main driver behind that, and for that, all of us up here are very, very grateful. And we're going to miss you, but I'm sure you'll have a fun time in your retirement years.
I intend to. I think I might start that right now.
Good for you. I might come find you later.
I'll leave you toward your bright future. Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Thanks, Ed. We'll move on now to the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening, approve the voucher list of bills and contract report October 1, 2020, approve the village board of trustee regular meeting minutes for September 17, 2020, review and file the board of police and fire commissioner meeting minutes of February 11, 2020, and September 19, 2020, review and file the planning and zoning commission meeting minutes of August 26, 2020, and the community development and finance department August monthly reports. A resolution approving a purchase order for Rico Construction Corp. for the installation of a water service line at 43 East Quincy for an amount not to exceed $50,000. A resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with HF, excuse me, FH Passion for demolition and renovation and approving a change order at 43 East Quincy Street for an amount not to exceed $138,000. A resolution approving a purchase order for Trademark Electric for electrical services at 43 East Quincy Street for an amount not to exceed $24,000. A resolution waiving the competitive bid process and authorizing the village manager to enter into contracts with Call One for the village's telephone and internet service. A resolution of the Village Riverside waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to issue a purchase order to Zoll Medical Corporation for the purchase of one X Series cardiac monitor defibrillator and two automatic external defibrillators in an amount not to exceed $35,000. A motion to approve special event applications for the Curbside Cuisine II to be held on Tuesday, October 13, 2020, and a drive-in, our drive-through Haunted House to be held on Friday, October 16, 2020. A resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the Village of Riverside for collections of ambulance fees. And lastly, a resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. Are there any items anyone needs to remove for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved by Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
Second. By Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have none this evening, so we'll move to considerations. First up is a discussion of Halloween 2020. Manager Francis?
Thank you. In your packet, if you recall, at the last board meeting, Trustee Gallegos had requested that we discuss Halloween, and President Salz had mentioned that it was going to be on this agenda. Since then, both CDC and Illinois Department of Public Health have provided guidance related to trick-or-treating. With regard to CDC, they've classified different activities with as varying levels of risk, so they're classified as low, moderate, and high risk. That is included within your packet. Also, because IDPH just released their guidance, that is not included within the packet, but many of the items mirrors what CDC has already posted. Also included in your packet, for your reference, are the different activities that Parks and Rec are putting together to assist with residents celebrating the Halloween holiday. And so if you'd like, I can have Director Malkiotti kind of outline that for you so that the residents at home can know what the different opportunities are for the activities for the community.
So, yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that? Mr. Malkiotti, if you just want to run through what you've already got planned.
Sure. Village President Salz, village board of trustees, village manager Francis. In addition to our second curbside event in cooperation with the Economic Development Commission, the Parks and Recreation Department has accepted the challenge of offering events and activities without compromising safety. Registration for all of these events will begin tomorrow at 9:00. The first one, which was in your packet, is the drive-through haunted house. We developed this so that people could experience a haunted house safely from their vehicles. It was kind of a take on our drive-in movies that we've already offered. It will be in the scout cabin area on Fairbank, and that will be Friday, October 16th. It will start at 3:30. 3:30 to 4:30 will be for younger children and the not-so-brave. Five to six will be for older children and those looking for a little scarier experience. The fee will be $13 per vehicle. Halloween decorations will line the streets along with a cast of spooky characters as you slowly drive past the historic scout cabin. You can safely experience this event from your vehicle, just don't pick up any hitchhikers. One important note is, we will be reaching out to our neighbors on Fairbank that will be impacted by the event, and not only will they receive free admission, they will have access to the driveways at any time during the event. We're also proud to partner once again with WSSRA, who will provide a special surprise at the end of the path, which can be placed in the vehicle's trunk if you wish. The other event we have is the spooky season egg hunt. Unfortunately, our traditional spring egg hunt was canceled, but that's no excuse not to have one. We all know this has been a weird year, so what would be more weird than an October egg hunt? We are going to give residents two choices. You can register for a scheduled time where we will drop off approximately 50 eggs at your home to be used whenever you like, or for only $4 more, staff will come to your house on seven designated days and scatter the eggs in your front yard. It's everything you'll need to host your own Halloween season egg hunt, and the event is generously sponsored by K-Slots. Another option we have is the virtual Witch's Brew Storytime. This is a take on the Storytime that we offered during Phase Two and Phase One. This will be Miss Elizabeth bringing her popular Storytime to Halloween with a story especially for you. This will be a free event. It will stream on Facebook Thursday, October 29th at 3:30. In addition to those, we will also be holding contests for the entire community to participate in. A house/door decorating contest and a pumpkin carving contest. We ask that residents send photos to the rec department at riversidepr@riverside-il.us. All submissions will be featured on our Facebook page, and a select few will receive awards. And all of this is in addition to the lighting of the historic water tower for the Halloween season.
Great. Thank you, Director. So the question for the board this evening is whether or not you have any interest in putting any kind of restrictions on the kind of traditional trick-or-treating that goes along with Halloween. A number of our neighboring communities have adopted what I think is a good idea. They're providing PDFs that people can print out at home that they put in their windows, and it either says, yes, this house is participating in trick-or-treating, or no, this house is not participating. That would be one option. Manager Francis and I also explored today the option of actually doing an every-door direct mailing to every home in Riverside that would be two-sided, that on one side would have the "we're in," the other side were not doing it. That would ensure that everyone in the village got one. There was a cost to that, about $1,600 to do that option. So those are some options for you, so I'll turn it over to you and hear your thoughts.
What exactly, what authority does the village board have over trick-or-treating?
Mr. Molina, you want to answer that?
So the question is, what authority?
What legal authority would we have if we wanted to do something?
There's general authority under the police power for non-home rule governments to regulate trick-or-treating because it involves youth and traffic and going door-to-door. This is absent the public health issues that are extraordinary going on right now. And also, under the various executive orders by the governor, there is authority to protect, you know, to protect public safety by reasonable regulations that try to limit exposure. So there's sufficient authority to place regulations in place if the board were so inclined to do it. It's obviously not necessary or required.
Other comments? Ms. Evans?
I'm comfortable with the CDC guidelines and the IDPH guidelines, just some communication to families, and possibly offering the PDF indicating whether they want to participate or not through our email system.
Other thoughts?
Do we know what the neighboring communities are doing? Has anyone announced?
Are you aware of what are?
So I don't know that North Riverside has made a decision. When I spoke with Brookfield previously, they said that they were doing something similar to the signage to allow people to know who was participating and who would not be.
I have heard that the city of Chicago is going to do the same thing. I would also like to have the signs on front door windows, you know, actually just for the ones who are going to participate in offering trick-or-treating. That way, it's more visible, that you know that that white sign is going to be there. Not everyone has a green or a blue, you know, paper or printer, color printer to print stuff out, so just those who are going to participate in it should have that sign on their window. Because it's going to get dark by like 5 o'clock or so, and...
So you're suggesting instead of having one that says yes, one that says no, just have one that would say that we are participating?
Yeah. I think that would be visibly easier for the trick-or-treaters as they walk down the sidewalk. Why complicate things?
Thoughts about that idea? Ms. Jones?
You know, I agree, but I, you know, think we go with a published list of recommendations rather than this is what's allowed and what's not allowed. I'd feel more comfortable with that. But, you know, the idea that, you know, people don't have to feel like they're being compelled to pass out candy, I think that's helpful with the signage. You know, I think social distancing, you know, if you see 30 people in line at a door, come back to that house. I know some other communities have talked about a recommendation that, you know, an adult be with the trick-or-treaters to remind them of social distancing. You know, when you're an excited eight- or nine-year-old and you walk up to a door, you're not going to think about, I need to stay six feet away. You're going to think about, I'm going to grab some candy and get onto the next house. So I think it really falls upon, you know, the adults, you know, there's been discussion on leaving, you know, candy out, leaving, you know, making sure that there's lined up several pieces of candy so they can just come and take it. But, you know, it's having everybody use their better judgment on maintaining what we've done well so far, which is socially distanced, and recommend that everyone, you know, wear masks. And if you are, you know, going to choose to be at the door and hand out candy, recommend that, you know, you sanitize after every visit.
Ms. Evans?
I believe that the Illinois Department of Public Health recommends putting out a table. They don't really recommend going door-to-door. So I would discourage people from going door-to-door, but I don't want to say it's not allowed. Just use some creative ideas for distributing candy so that everyone can have fun and be safe at the same time.
Mr. Pollak?
I agree generally with what the other trustees are saying. Publicize the guidelines. Get the word out as best we can. Give people the opportunity to opt out if they want to, and let the public take it from there.
Ms. Collins?
The idea of sending out something to people, I understand, is the mailing cost. But could we print up something that they could pick up here at the village hall? Like maybe if we went with, it's not a yes or a no, it's just a yes on orange paper or something, something that would stand out, and that way they don't need to print it out, they could just pick something up at the village?
We could certainly do that. Manager Francis suggested that we could also ask some of our local businesses to help us, like Riverside Foods, we could have some there. I mean, Manager Francis and I had talked about this opt-in, you know, idea that Trustee Gallegos mentions. It's easier, I just wonder, because we do get a number of people coming from outside the community as well, I wonder if it would be as clear, you know, I wonder if it wouldn't be clearer to everyone involved if we had, you know, a yes. I mean, and actually, Director Malkiotti was working on some mock-ups today that, you know, shows one with a big green check, you know, that we're in, and then one with like a Ghostbuster circle with a lineup off that says, you know, no, we're not participating. But it's up to the board.
I advised with the experts, the eight-year-old and the five-year-old, that they definitely want Halloween, number one. But, you know, and the paper idea is a great idea. I love the Ghostbuster thing. Would it also be smart, because it will be dark, and these will be kids who, as Trustee Hannan said, will be excited, and, you know, they get crazy? What if we took it even one step further and just advised, not the guests from other towns would know this, but if we let the community know that if you are going to be handing out candy, maybe leave your porch light on, and if you're not, leave your porch light off. Some people will make mistakes, but it makes it a little bit easier visible for them to see something. Might be, you know, it's just a way to make it a little bit more easy on the eyes.
So, I mean, I, I mean, I think that we're, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Collins.
Well, I was just going to say, because it is Saturday, could we set the hours earlier and not have them in the evening? So have it like, you know, 2:00 to 5:00 or something like that? Or are you thinking not to set hours?
I think the hours now are 3:00 to 7:00.
Right.
So if the board wants to change the hours, you certainly...
I'm just thinking that as far as like with the social distancing, that it's easier to maintain when it's light out and that we don't have the older kids that are out when it's dark coming, you know, at 8:00 and 9:00 if we stop at some earlier time. I know that some of the communities are extending the hours, so it's thinking that people will space out more if it's over a longer period of time. That might just inundate us with people though also, so...
I mean, you know, we talked about, I mean, I, I think that's a good concept. I just worry about, no matter what we try to do in terms of actually getting that message out, I think people are so ingrained with the 3:00 to 7:00. It's been such a long tradition here that they're apt to, you know, whether if we say, you know, 2:00 to 6:00 or something like that, I suspect you're still going to have a lot of folks who are still going out after 6:00. But what do you think of the Trustee Collins' idea about altering the time?
I think 3:00 to 7:00 is reasonable.
Sorry?
I like keeping it the way it is with 3:00 to 7:00. It's not late enough, and I think that, you know, the parents and residents, you know, as Trustee Jiza said, the younger kids go out early, older kids like the idea of going out after dark. And it's, you know, everyone knows what the hours are based on prior years, so I would definitely be against extending them and don't see a need to reduce them in that that would probably lead to more crowding.
So it sounds like we have consensus that what we want to do is have the signage available by PDF, also make them available on our local businesses. I don't perceive any interest from anybody up here in trying to curtail or limit the traditional trick-or-treating in any way. Plus, I think it would be an impossibility to enforce even if we wanted to. So with that, I think we can leave it to our village staff to get these signs made up and PDFs and distribute them and let our residents know. I like the idea about the porch lights, you know, that if you're, if you're going to be involved with the trick-or-treating, leave your light on. If you're not, you know, leave the light off. So is that agreeable to everyone? Yes? Okay, thank you. All right, so next we'll move on to our continuing discussion of the 2021 budget. Director Johnson?
Good evening. Tonight I've provided for you a proposed 2021 budget for the general fund. Staff started this budget process with the board in September with the presentation of the 10-year capital improvement plan and the five-year financial forecast. This plan has been refined through input from the board, village manager, and department heads since the financial forecast. Included in these changes were shifting the police pension contribution to the minimum required contribution, decreasing health insurance contributions due to the final rates being provided by NSABC. We refined the Parks and Recreation revenues and expenses, and refined wage expectations. These changes have decreased the deficit from $316,019 presented at the financial forecast to a deficit of $132,499. Before you tonight is a variety of potential budget reductions that staff would like input in. Would you like me to walk you through the different options?
Yes.
Okay. We have eliminate the forestry intern, reduce the forestry intern from 25 to 20 weeks, eliminate public work seasonal employee, or reduce the seasonal employee from 25 to 20 weeks. We have two public work seasonal employees currently in the budget, so that is listed twice. We, the village, may not replace the vacant CSO position, eliminate WCMC membership, reduce cyclic tree trimming, eliminate the Ravinia event, and refill the medical cabinets in-house. The other item on here that I wanted to discuss a little further is the transfer of NSABC balance to the general fund cash flow assignment. This is a balance sheet adjustment. Currently, the NSABC balance gets no interest, so it's not earning any extra revenue held at NSABC. If we transferred this to the cash flow assignment, I would put it in our IMED accounts, which last month yielded 3.19%. The other option that had previously been discussed with the board was rolling that into our IRMA balances, which does get significant interest amounts. However, this year at IRMA, we are estimating approximately that much to be gained in interest revenue, so that amount would stay pretty neutral for our total prepaid.
And just one other item, just to follow up on our discussion last time. We had talked about the possibility of moving our IRMA money, changing our fund balance policy, so that our IRMA funds would be included in our unassigned balance. That can't be done, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Johnson. So that, the IRMA part has to stay there. However, the NSABC funding can be moved to the unassigned, which would allow staff a lot more flexibility in where to draw funds from should they need to as we go through next year. Mr. Pollak?
Can you, could someone explain why we can't do that?
Ms. Johnson?
It makes it slightly cleaner to either...
...candy so they can just come and take it, but you know, it's having everybody use their better judgment on maintaining what we've done well so far, which is social distancing, and recommend that everyone, you know, wear masks. And if you are, you know, going to choose to be at the door and hand out candy, recommend that, you know, you sanitize after every visit.
I believe that the Illinois Department of Public Health recommends putting out a table. They don't really recommend going door to door. So, I would discourage people from going door to door, but I don't want to say it's not allowed. Just use some creative ideas for distributing candy so that everyone can have fun and be safe at the same time.
Mr. Powell?
I agree generally with what the other trustees are saying. Publicize the guidelines, get the word out as best we can, give people the opportunity to opt out if they want to, and let the public take it from there.
The idea of sending out something to people, I understand is the mailing cost, but could we print up something that they could pick up here at the village hall? Like maybe if we went with, it's not a yes or a no, it's just a yes, on orange paper or something, something that would stand out, and that way they don't need to print it out, they could just pick something up at the village?
We could certainly do that. Manager Francis suggested that we could also ask some of our local businesses to help us, like Riverside Foods, we could have some there. I mean, Manager Francis and I had talked about this opt-in, you know, idea that Trustee Gallegos mentions. It's easier, I just wonder, because we do get a number of people coming from outside the community as well, I wonder if it would be as clear, you know, I wonder if it wouldn't be clearer to everyone involved if we had, you know, a yes. I mean, and actually Director Makioti was working on some mockups today that, you know, shows one with a big green check, you know, that we're in, and then one with the, like a Ghostbuster circle with the lineup off that says, you know, "No, we're not participating." But it's up to the board.
I've advised with my, the experts, an eight-year-old and a five-year-old, that they definitely want Halloween, number one. But, you know, and the paper idea is a great idea, I love the Ghostbuster thing. Would it also be smart, because it will be dark, and these will be kids who, as Trustee Hannan said, will be excited, and, you know, they get crazy? What if we took it even one step further and just advised, not the guests from other towns would know this, but if we let the community know that if you are going to be handing out candy, maybe leave your porch light on, and if you're not, leave your porch light off. Some people will make mistakes, but it makes it a little bit easier visible for them to see something.
That's a good idea.
You know, it's just a way to make it a little bit more easy on the eyes.
So, I mean, I think that we're, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Collins.
Well, I was just going to say, because it is Saturday, could we set the hours earlier and not have them in the evening? So have it like, you know, two to five, or something like that? Or are you thinking not to set hours?
I think the hours now are three to seven.
Right.
So if the board wants to change the hours, you certainly...
I'm just thinking that as far as, like, with the social distancing, that it's easier to maintain when it's light out, and that we don't have the older kids that are out when it's dark, coming, you know, at eight and nine, if we stop at some earlier time. I know that some of the communities are extending the hours, so it's thinking that people will space out more if it's over a longer period of time. That might just inundate us with people though also, so...
I mean, you know, we talked about, I mean, I think that's a good concept. I just worry about, no matter what we try to do in terms of actually getting that message out, I think people are so ingrained with the three to seven, it's been such a long tradition here, that they're apt to, you know, whether, if we say, you know, two to six or something like that, I suspect you're still going to have a lot of folks who are still going out after six. But what do you think of the Trustee Collins' idea about altering the time?
I think three to seven's reasonable.
Sorry?
I like keeping it the way it is with three to seven. It's not late enough, and I think that, you know, the parents and residents, you know, as Trustee Jesus said, the younger kids go out early, older kids like the idea of going out after dark. And it's, you know, everyone knows what the hours are based on prior years, so I would definitely be against extending them, and don't see a need to reduce them, in that that would probably lead to more crowding.
So, it sounds like we have consensus that what we want to do is have the signage available by PDF, also make them available in our local businesses. I don't perceive any interest from anybody up here in trying to curtail or limit the traditional trick-or-treating in any way. Plus, I think it would be an impossibility to enforce, even if we wanted to. So with that, I think we can leave it to our village staff to get these signs made up and PDFs and distribute them and let our residents know. I like the idea about the porch lights, you know, that if you're going to be involved with the trick-or-treating, leave your light on. If you're not, you know, leave the light off. So, is that agreeable to everyone? Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next we'll move on to our continuing discussion of the 2021 budget. Director Johnson?
Good evening. Tonight I've provided for you a proposed 2021 budget for the general fund. Staff started this budget process with the board in September with the presentation of the 10-year capital improvement plan and the five-year financial forecast. This plan has been refined through input from the board, village manager, and department heads since the financial forecast included in these changes were shifting the police pension contribution to the minimum required contribution, decreasing health insurance contributions due to the final rates being provided by NSABC. We refined the parks and recreation revenues and expenses, and refined wage expectations. These changes have decreased the deficit from $316,019 presented at the financial forecast to a deficit of $132,499. Before you tonight is a variety of potential budget reductions that staff would like input Would you like me to walk you through the different options?
Yes.
Okay. We have eliminate the forestry intern, reduce the forestry intern from 25 to 20 weeks, eliminate public work seasonal employee, or reduce the seasonal employee from 25 to 20 weeks. We have two public work seasonal employees currently in the budget, so that is listed The village may not replace the vacant CSO position, eliminate WCMC membership, reduce cyclic tree trimming, eliminate the Ravinia event, and refill the medical cabinets in-house. The other item on here that I wanted to discuss a little further is the transfer of NSABC balance to the general fund cash flow assignment. This is a balance sheet adjustment. Currently, the NSABC balance gets no interest, so it's not earning any extra revenue held at NSABC. If we transferred this to the cash flow assignment, I would put it in our IMAT accounts, which last month yielded 3.19%. The other option that had previously been discussed with the board was rolling that into our IRMA balances, which does get significant interest amounts. However, this year at IRMA, we are estimating approximately that much to be gained in interest revenue, so that amount would stay pretty neutral for our total pre-pays.
And just one other item, just to follow up on our discussion last time. We had talked about the possibility of moving our IRMA money, changing our fund balance policy, so that our IRMA funds would be included in our unassigned balance. That can't be done, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Johnson. So that, the IRMA part has to stay there, however, the NSABC funding can be moved to the unassigned, which would allow staff a lot more flexibility in where to draw funds from should they need to as we go through next year. Mr. Powell?
Can you, can someone explain why we can't do that?
Ms. Johnson?
It makes it slightly cleaner to either allow all of it in fund balance or none of it in fund balance, just wanting to make sure that we have clear guidelines for staff and board in future years. We felt that reviewing this and possibly moving it to the IMAT, which still is getting good interest rates, would be a cleaner approach.
Is it, is there something also, though, about the prepay? The prepay can't be shifted and be used as part of the cash flow?
We have talked to the auditors, and they're not totally comfortable with including it in the cash flow assignment. It would be a recalculation of how we do the cash flow assignment, but it could be done.
Powell?
I thought that what we were looking at doing was changing our reserve fund policy so that the 25% policy included any money that happens to be sitting with IRMA.
That's what, that is what we talked about.
And that would free up general fund reserves for expenditure.
That is exactly what we talked about. My understanding now, the reticence of the auditors, that that is probably not... But however, the NSABC money, we can do that with the NSABC money, which is what is being proposed here.
So it's the auditors...
So that would go into, that would go into the 25% calculation.
Would the auditors frown upon us just changing our policy from 25% to 23%, knowing that we have the IRMA money?
I think the 25% is the best practice through Government Finance Officers Association, and is something that we can bank on telling our, when we go out to issue debt, having that 25% is a good number to have in our cash flow assignment.
From a bond rating perspective, you don't want them to see you fluctuating your policies too much, because that could have a negative impact.
Okay, thank you.
So, perhaps simplifying this, if you look at option one that staff has presented, that still leaves us about $4,000 short. And again, let's keep in mind that there's a certain abstract quality to what we're doing right now. You know, we're working toward a number that presents a balanced budget. In reality, as we remember from the last time, over the course of the last, you know, seven or eight years, we've had an average of $184,000 a year surplus every year. But having said that, in order to present the budget as balanced, you could simply reduce the cyclic tree trimming from $40,000 to $36,000, and that would close the gap. President's House.
I, first of all, commend Director Johnson and her group on putting together these two options. It made distilling this very easy to do. My questions, though, focus on impact on the village, and they all seem to focus on forestry and tree trimming, and just want to understand from a practical point of view, you know, if we do everything proposed in option one, what would be the impact on maintenance of the green spaces, trimming of the trees in the common areas, and protecting what is sort of the magic of Riverside, which is its natural beauty?
And now we know what Mr. Bailey ran as soon as he had the... Mr. Tab, you want to take a stab at the step?
So I won't speak to a specific option, but in general, with regards to our seasonals, we primarily hire seasonals for parks maintenance, grass cutting, chipping a brush, picking up garbage, assistance with, assisting the full-timers in daily tasks and so forth. With regards to cyclic tree trimming, anything that is either reduced has to be, is in essence being postponed, or the whole cycle, it's a five-cycle kind of operation, shifted down the road. A lot of times during cyclic tree trimming, we are able to identify potentially hazardous trees, whether it's dead loss, or rot, or cavities, and so forth. So, we're preemptively able to diagnose a hazard that may, down the road, become a more expensive issue, or a tree falls down, it does property damage, so forth. So we're able to assess that during a cyclic trim. And from a standpoint of what we call outside the cycle trimming, is an hourly rate versus if we do a cyclic trim in a, an area, designated area, we get a better rate on the diameter of the tree. So, any reduction in our, I guess our status quo as far as cyclic trimming is, one would be more expensive on an hourly basis, and two would be potentially increasing a hazardous situation just by, in essence, kicking the can down the road.
So this is a temporary savings, not a permanent savings, because eventually we'll have to address those issues that we've kicked the can down the road?
Exactly, yep.
And it sounds like it's also a potential safety issue?
It could be, yeah. A lot of issues that we've come across have been identified during cyclic trimming.
And it's potentially, in the long run, more financially advantageous to do it on a planned cyclic as opposed to on an ad hoc basis?
Exactly. So, just for example, I guess we can talk about a 12-inch diameter or a larger tree. During a cyclic trim, it's approximately $56 per tree to trim during the cyclic cycle. If we have to do it outside on an hourly basis, it's approximately $425 per hour to trim that same tree.
Okay, so that, option two includes cutting the cyclic trimming budget in half?
Right.
Where option one doesn't touch the $40,000 budget?
Correct.
So, just following up on that, the cyclic part that you're talking about, when does that take place? Is that throughout the year?
The fall.
So, this would be an expense that we're looking at for fall of 2021?
Right. We got to do our cyclic trim this year, so we'll do it probably end of October, and then this will be for next year's.
I mean, I am with you, Mr. Hannan, I mean, this is not the kind of thing that I would normally be interested in cutting back on. But again, given, you know, our past history with the surpluses, what I would suggest is, you know, reduce it by the $4,000 now, in terms of the budget being presented, with a direction that as, when we get to next fall, if there's that $4,000 there, then we use it on, for this purpose, that we restore this to its full amount.
I'm sorry, it's a $20,000 difference, I think is being proposed.
I'm sorry?
It looks to me like it's moving from 40 to 20, so it'd be a $20,000 swing?
That's option two. So what we could do in option one is move from 40 to 36?
I'm not seeing that.
The 4,000's not listed there, Ed, but the option that is there is still 4,000 short of what we need, so that's where the 4,000 that Ben's talking about is.
Is the vendor willing to work with us? I mean, off the standard prices, or have we spoken to them about that?
We have a contract with them, and the way it's presented to them is, we have X number of dollars, and we tell them what we want trimmed for that dollar amount. And then, you know, the forester goes through the cycle, identifies trees that need to be trimmed, or he deems necessary to be trimmed, and we work within a budget. So it's, you know, we have set prices per diameter of a tree, and that's a locked-in...
Would they be willing to adjust that, considering the state of the world?
I couldn't tell you, sitting here, I don't know. Pretty much what it comes down to is, we would trim pure trees with a reduced budget. You know, I don't think mid-contract, we'd be able to necessarily negotiate a better deal, just so we can extend and hit more trees within the cycle.
Solutions? Ms. Evans?
I agree that trees should be prioritized.
Sorry?
I agree that the funding for the trees should be prioritized. I wanted to ask a few questions about the seasonal employees. So I understand that this year there were zero seasonal employees.
Correct.
And for next year, if we were to eliminate two positions, you would still have two seasonal employees? You usually have three or four?
We typically have three or four. This proposal is for, we're only having two.
So you'd have zero?
We're proposing two, if these are cut, we'll have zero again.
So there'd be zero seasonal employees next year?
Right.
Thank you.
True.
They really have to do a lot of work to keep up with the parks without seasonal employees. My understanding is that staff has to go, leave their regular duties to go take turns to mow the lawn?
Typically during a summer period, we have two full-time staff that cut grass, and then we also assign two seasonal employees to cut grass as well. So we have four people cutting grass throughout the year. This year, having no seasonals, we dedicated one full-time staff member on a rotating basis for, you know, the grass-cutting period. So we pulled one full-time staff member off of their normal duties, and they would cut grass on a rotating basis. So they each have a day of the week to cut grass, and that's kind of how we filled the void. And even having done that, we were still short one person, so we typically are able to cut the town, what we call a cycle, in about a week. It varies at the beginning of the growing season, just because so much rain and so forth. So not having that fourth person, the cycle is extended, and, you know, if you recall, earlier this year, there was periods of time where there was some longer grass throughout town, and that's the result of just being short-staffed and not having that additional person.
How long is the grass long for? Just a few extra days, or...?
It depends on the weather. It could, it varies.
Thank you.
One of the items that the board approved during the consent agenda today was a switch to new phone service, which would also fill that $4,000 gap. Since the board had not voted on it, that was not included in next year's update. So if we make those adjustments with option one, you would not need to decrease the cyclic tree trimming.
Or we could keep the cyclic tree trimming and... Oh, I see, yes. You want to tell us more about the phones?
The contract came up with call one, so we were able to renegotiate our call, our service lines, and provide fiber connections to the public works facility, which will actually be better service and a cheaper price for the next three years. So we were very excited about that change. Trying to find in my packet exactly what...
So if you kind of...
It was a significant...
Kind of, those despite her face, we were, to go back on that, we would lose the benefit that she has gained. I mean, you're gaining a three-year contract with this.
Correct. What she's saying is there's a derived savings, and so therefore, we don't, if you're satisfied with the items that are outlined in option one, we don't need to look for any additional cuts, because we're going to be deriving significant savings next year because of this call one contract the board approved on the consent agenda.
Oh, I see, okay, I see what you're saying. So we don't have to not do call one. Call one is already generating that $4,000.
Correct, correct, they're savings.
And I think I'll just, and go back to the, maybe, the cutting back of the seasonals with regard to the upkeep of our green space. I mean, how significant of an impact is this going to be going from four to two?
Well, it depends how long it goes for, honestly. So outside of park maintenance, typically seasonals would help us with hydrant flushing, hydrant painting, gas light, post-painting. So there are additional tasks that we haven't been able to accomplish with having zero seasonals this year. We had to forego some of those, because we did, you know, there's only so much time in a day and so many people to do the work.
Given our past experience with the generation of, generating of surpluses, by the time summer gets here, well, how much of a better idea will we have of where we are at financially, projection-wise, so that we could revisit whether or not at that point we want to bring in one of these seasonals?
What month do seasonals typically start? Is that May 1st?
If, kind of, a college schedule is typically middle of May, middle 10 of May we bring them.
So assuming we would start advertising for the positions mid-April, we'd have a pretty good idea of where we're going to end up the year. Our audit would be mostly complete by that time.
We would also know at that point in time what the surplus was derived for fiscal year 2020.
Because I think I sense a desire by this board to not cut those seasonals if we don't absolutely have to, because we want that work done, and we want to free up our full-time people to do what they're trained to do. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes, I agree that, well, I agree that the tree trimming should be fully budgeted. Sounds like option one gets us a balanced budget now, correct? I still like the idea of where you were going, President's House, with kind of a waitlist approach, where we see where we're at after the first quarter, after the audit comes in for this current fiscal year. I know staff do this anyway. If we look like we're behind, they come back to us and say, you know, "It's in the budget, but we don't have the money for it." So we have that cushion to fall back on, but I, you know, I think, to me, it seems like our work is done here. Option one gets us a balanced budget, staff will monitor it as we go into the fiscal year, and come back to us if there's a problem.
Is there agreement on that? Is there also agreement to transfer the NSABC funds to the general fund cash flow? Yes?
If I may, my recommendation as it relates to these cuts, so that we can reflect a balanced budget, is to make them, and then as we go into next fiscal year, we're just on notice that we may have a budget amendment during next fiscal year, but just so that for good, sound financial policy and practices, just making these modifications, but knowing the wishes of the board, and so planning towards that end.
I think, is that what we just said?
I just wanted to confirm that that was the case.
That is what we just said.
Okay.
Okay.
There is additional DCEO grant funding that was awarded but not released yet for green initiatives, so if the state decides to release that funding next year, that would also free up dollars for these projects.
Well, you know, I'm glad you said that. I should have mentioned this in my president's report. I did want to report to the village also that the, we had, and in fact, I wish Mr. Bailey had been here when I said this, because he was the driving force behind it. We did receive a $50,000 grant from the Invest in Cook program that is going to be put towards the Swan Pond path restoration, and that was largely driven by Mr. Bailey in pushing that through. So as he leaves us, he leaves us with another success, so that was a big deal. So anything else from us? Ms. Johnson?
I think we have direction. Thank you.
You know, I was going to suggest, since Ravinia is more of an expense...
I'm sorry?
Maybe we can ask EDC to take a look at it, and perhaps come up with a different business model for that.
For Ravinia?
Yeah, maybe we do have time.
Like getting sponsorship, you mean?
Yeah.
We could certainly do that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you again to the staff, we're all behind the work, and to the village board for making difficult decisions. Does anyone have any new business to see? Yes?
Yes, I did want to follow up on the plans you said you had for the 28th.
The what?
The plans you said you had for the 28th. First responders day, you had thought about doing something for them on the October 28th date?
I don't recall that.
You said it in August.
I thought we talked about doing the flag. What else, what else did you have in mind?
I don't know. You said you had plans, so I want to know if you had any plans you want to discuss with the board.
I don't recall us discussing that.
Okay, maybe we should discuss it on the next agenda then?
If you have something to discuss, do you have any ideas?
You're the one who said you had ideas for it.
I don't recall the board having that discussion.
Okay, well, I remember you saying specifically you had ideas, but, okay.
Anything else? You're not asked for motion, we have no need for executive session, ask for a motion, psych to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Gallegos?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Trustee Jesus?
Aye.
Trustee Hannan?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, good night.